Well, let's go ahead and see if we can quiet down. We'll call the work session to order from the board.
All right, we'll call the work session to order for the school board as well. And I think the most important part is our conversation this evening. We just want to thank both boards for being here and making the time to make that happen. Appreciate your attendance and looking forward to a conversation where we can determine what's best for our community, charter that forward and share some ideas, perspectives, not necessarily only about the past, but how, what our plan is moving forward and how we can work together in conjunction and for the best interest of our students, our community, and Frederick County, the best place to live, work, and raise a family. So with that, we've got our approval of the agenda.
Is this the agenda? One with two words on it?
That's correct. So.
One of you chairman, or maybe both of you chairman for approval? No, I'm not going to move for approval. I'd like to know what I'm approving. Comments doesn't work for me. You made a little comment there, and that's fine. I understand that. Is that where we're going tonight? We're not in a budget discussion, we're in a find out where we are and what we'd like to do discussion? Is that how I understand this to be before I approve?
Sure, Mr. Monk, you have the agenda before you there. Part of it is budget discussions, 2023, and then.
But discussion doesn't really, that's a wide open topic. So I'm just trying to see where we are. And how would you like to hand up questions towards the chairman to be recognized?
Sure, I think the best opportunity is the respective chair of your board.
Thank you very much.
So you shared part of our agenda is about budget and.
It is about budget? I did not think that was part of tonight's budget. Of tonight's comments.
Sure, you see it on the agenda before you and your, your, well, welcome to amend that. But also, it is a discussion, and these boards haven't met together in nearly two years. So it's an opportunity for us to share discussion amongst each other and an opportunity to move forward.
I misunderstood what the name is, though.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the agendas presented.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any discussion, anyone? Those in favor, Ron?
I have.
Well, the thought the agenda is presented. We're one note.
Two notes.
Two notes, I'm sorry. You have to speak up, there's a lot of rustling in the room.
All right, sir. Have before us the 2023 budget, a discussion around that, with the pleasure of the boards.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, respected board members, I want to say I really do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to, to me, term of, I'd like this to really focus on the future. Almost all of you on your board are fairly new. I think a lot of the issues that we've had with this board in the past can be overcome with common working together. I hope that with some new faces on the board and some open, open minds, we'll be able to have conversations. We may not always agree, we may even most seriously disagree on things. And that's okay, but I think as long as we're doing it in good faith, then it's a good thing. So I do look forward to the conversation. So I hope we don't dwell too much tonight on the past. I think there are certain things that need to be discussed, to get some context, but beyond that, I hope we can focus on how we move forward and not dwell too much on the past.
Blake. I'd like to suggest, Blake, sat down with Jay Point two years ago, had this very technical meeting. So my comment would be, so let's just plan a meeting sometime in November and then maybe next February, March. The reason I say November is you're going to have a strategic meeting in October sometime. So I would tend to like three of those, to listen to what you had to say. And then if we could have, but I can't talk at that. So after that meeting, following, you know, like, we had a chance to sit down and chat, now I mean, hopefully, that's number one. Number two, next February, early March, we'll get the same message discussed, discussion. And if we're staying down, then everybody can go and, you know, have improvement of that. So that's just a, one suggestion.
Clock's ticking, folks.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, I think that would be a great way to amend the working relationship between the two boards going forward. If, I don't know about the exact dates, but, you know, if we had something scheduled, I think that would bring a lot more transparency to the community.
Mr. Chairman, either one. I don't know if you recognize me, right?
I will.
Okay, thank you very much. Nice. There you go. Been here a long time, lived in Frederick County a long time, been involved in all the boards and everything else, been on this board for a long time. And I can tell you one thing right now, I've always had a decent relationship with school boards. I don't have a problem with you guys. I don't. If I call you and ask you something, you give me any answer. You know, I work it out individually, I don't have meetings, but this is fine. I don't have a problem with this. It's a good idea, every time you get together, you know, families get together and do that kind of thing. So that's why I'm with you. But it seems to me there is an air that says that we're in a battle between the school boards and the board of supervisors. I don't feel that way. That's me personally. Some of the others might feel that way, but I don't feel that way. I like you all, I respect you all, and I hope I gain your respect the same way. So working together forward, I'm all for that. I've always done that in the past and continue to do so. You know, my.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Sir, get into some substantive discussion. One of the things I'd like us to start talking about together are two major items. One is the fourth high school. I'd like us to have discussions, similar to like we did with Ailer. We spent a lot of time working together on the Ailer project, going over the various iterations of what might be possible and what that would look like. There were a lot of questions that arose at the end of that project that caused several members of this board to question, you know, will we actually get what we're told we're going to get? So I'd like us to sort of work through those types of issues and get assurances that, you know, when we're told we're going to get something, we're really going to get that, that thing. I know that everyone on this board wants to make sure that we have schools available for the children. We just want to make sure that we have all the priorities covered. So from our side of this discussion, you know, we have to take care of schools, we have to take care of firefighters, we have to take care of the sheriffs, we have to take care of IT. There's so many other things we have to take care of, and they're all, have to prioritize. And unless we have discussions, understand why you need something, when you say you need something, or what the urgency of that need is in comparison to the needs that are expressed to us by, say, fire and rescue and police or, say, the public radio system, things like that that cost incredible amounts of money, 20 million and more. It's difficult for us to prioritize how the money should be spent, and we're supposed to be a good steward. So when we question, you know, why should the money be spent, it's not because we don't want you spending money. It's not because there's a concern that it's necessarily even being wasted, it's just what is the priority and where does it need to fall on the list? And thus, we have good open communication between the boards, which I just don't feel like we have before. It's been more administrators talking to us versus you all sharing with us. I think this is an important step forward, having these conversations one on, one across the table versus administrators filtering to administrators. It allows us to have conversations that'll be really important, and I think that's how the Ailer discussion went. There was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of questions, hard questions being asked, and the school board came back with a lot of answers for us. And I think anytime we have major projects like that, we should have discussions between the boards face to face, so we can ask those questions. And it's not just sort of a, we'll mail you a request across town, and then you'll mail us back a reply across town. It's more important that we sit here. So I think that's one issue that I think I'd like us to have some work sessions to discuss as we move forward. Is the fourth high school. The other is, I have a concern about the budget in comparison to the state average. And I mentioned last night, the state average is something like 74%, 75% funding over and above the standard of learning, you know, across the state, or closer to 140%. So we're almost twice what the average is. So my question is, I'm not accusing the school board of being wasteful, I'm not accusing the school board of using the money for inappropriate things, I just don't know how we're spending the money. So I'd like to see if we're able to dig into this because we're an outlier. We're spending somewhere like number six, number seven, as far as the amount of money that we spend over the minimum for standards of learning. But yet, we're 22, I think we're 23 in the state for our teachers' pay. So I'd like to understand what are we spending money on that other schools aren't, and what is the importance of those things that we're spending the money on versus teachers' pay? So those are important discussions that may be uncomfortable discussions to have, but I think they're really important discussions for us to have. Because it's important for us to understand how Frederick County may need to spend money in a different way than, say, Warren County or other neighboring counties. But those are discussions we should have and answers that can be given. Supervisor Dunn often says, you know, if you're going to have a budget, make it as transparent as you can and defend it. There's nothing wrong with saying, I need to have this, coming forward and defending it, and then letting the decision makers make a decision. And you should be offended when someone asks you to defend it. You know, we ask all of our county officials to come and defend their budgets, whether it's the sheriff or the fire chief, the IT department, every department has at some point to come defend their budget in either a committee meeting or before the whole board. So it's just part of the process of working through budgets. So it shouldn't be something that should be seen as an offense, or be seen as this board's trying to cut funding to the schools. It's part of the process of being a good steward. So hopefully, you'll understand that's part of the process and that the process is going to have some difficult questions that are going to need to be answered. I do think that our side of the table can be a little more civil sometimes in how we ask those questions immediately. So hopefully, we can get to a point where we're having more conversation versus accusations and then counter accusations and the like. So that's my hope moving forward, but those are the two big topics I'd like us to focus on as we're moving forward is the fourth high school. Why is it, when is it needed? How would it be done? Are there alternatives to that? And if there are alternatives, why would the alternatives not be better than the building of the fourth high school? All legitimate questions. And can we really get a handle on the budget? Because I think if we can come to some consensus on the baseline of the budget, budget is proper the way it is, or if it needs to be expanded or needs to be cut, if we can all come to some consensus, then it makes it a lot easier moving forward in budget time for us to then decide whether or not this is a good expenditure, expenditure of money moving forward. So those are the two things, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see it focused on in the next 60, 69 minutes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your work, Mr. McCarthy. I am glad that we were able to come here as the two boards to sit down. I think we've got a lot to talk about. It could have happened last year, we got two days left. And I do want to give a kudos to Mr. Graber for being here tonight, because you were the only one that was not at the two-minute class, you know, was able to come last year. So I do appreciate you coming and being here too, so we could all be here tonight. Mr. McCarthy, you know, perception is everything. Okay. And, you know, there's things that this board can work on, and I believe there's things that that board can work on. Mrs. Slaughter, Mr. Wells, and Mr. DeHaven have no problem calling me on the phone. We've talked plenty of times in person on the phone, but not once have I ever gotten a phone call from you, Mr. Graber, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Lebling, Mr. You know, McCarthy last year, no, Stagmar, had no problems calling me. We would sit down and chat all the time. So, I mean, perception is everything, and for you to say that you don't, and again, it might not be what you guys are intending to do, but there's been some heavy discussions about, you know, taking $60 million away from the school system without any phone calls, without any discussion, charter schools. And so where you might say that you're not wanting to take funds away from schools, perception is you are. And so that's where we stand, and it's, it's hard for a school board to come to meetings and have open discussions when there's those types of things being said at your meetings. And so I, I'll tell you right now, there's things we can work on, and I ask that you guys can work on it. It takes two to tango, and we all need to come to the table. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond?
Sure.
Thank you for the words. I guess, you know, when I come to this, my perception is that we're all grownups and that no one should be afraid to come to a meeting just because someone has suggested a different policy approach or a change in policy approach. Yep. The government is about debate, it's about trying to find answers. So there shouldn't be any, I mean, you could say outrageous things about Frederick County Board Supervisor, I would still show up for a meeting and have a discussion to debate the merits of that thing. So I don't, I don't think that that, that policy discussion that one board should chill the conversation with another board, if we're all adults and we know that this, that our job is to debate these things, try to decide on the merits and make decisions. So it's unfortunate that you feel like you can't talk to us because of things that are said at our meetings, but, you know, we're having policy discussions. We'd like to have these meetings, we've been trying to get together for quite a long time. These things could have been discussed amongst the boards. It's always been a policy of this board that we try to have conversations as open as we possibly can, so we don't have sort of one-on-one conversations necessarily. So I tend not to have individual conversations, but I have conversations that, try to make them public and on the record, so people know what I'm discussing and what I'm thinking versus sort of backdoor, behind-the-scenes discussions. One of the major issues. So I appreciate what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I just hope that moving forward, you understand that there's no reason to fear having a conversation, even on our topics, if this board has policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, before I begin, I'd like to thank Chairman Monk and Vice Chairman Koppstuck for making this happen. I know you guys put a lot of effort into it, and I appreciate your efforts to allow us as boards to come together. Thanks you so very much. I'd like to address some comments that were made here by Mr. Huster regarding not attending meetings last year. I don't know how many folks here are able to change their schedule with a 24-hour notice, but I doubt that it's very many. The reason I say that is, is because one of those meetings that you make reference to from last year, I had lost the 24-hour notice to make a meeting. I don't know about you, but it's very difficult when you're working outside job to rearrange a schedule on a 24-hour notice. Regarding having contact with folks, I think if we have a casual conversation with my representative, which is Chairman Monk from my district, he would likely tell you we talk just about every week. It might just be a simple phone call, how you doing, what are your needs, is there anything we can talk about, is there anything that comes to mind? But he's my representative, and so that's who I try to have a reasonable conversation with. And I believe that Chairman Monk and I have a really good working relationship. Just because I don't reach out to you doesn't mean that I have something against you. Now, maybe I should have a reason to have something against you because of the outright lies that you said about me last March. How do I know that they're lies? Well, I've foisted a copy of what you read off of that email, so that's how I know that they're lies, some of the comments that were made were lies. So I'm not willing to reach out to somebody who has lashed out to me in that way with falsehoods. Chairman Monk and I have, have had a great working relationship, I hope that we can continue to have a good working relationship, and we continue to talk about the needs of the schools. Having said those things, I would like to go over a couple of questions that I have. I have, I have 10 different questions, and I'll just start out with a couple. And I'm going to ask, the first one to Chairman Monk, this board about six weeks ago asked for and submitted a request for a categorical budget to be submitted to us as a board of supervisors. I personally have not seen that yet. Has the school board submitted one for review about the board of supervisors as of this date?
I don't know, as of this date, and recall our last meeting, our finance executive director shared that that was being prepared and would be submitted to the board of supervisors.
And do you have any idea when we might receive that?
I can give you a date for that.
I've been told to send within the next couple of weeks.
Excellent.
So Ms. Camery Hall just shared it was sent yesterday, so it should be given to you also.
There have been a lot of discussions in October of 2020. School Board Member Lake indicated that he had seen a budget book, or had a budget book of about that thick that he indicated on camera regarding the budget that they were looking at for the year. I have to inquire, have you guys received a thick, detailed budget book on this year's budget? We've received 27 pages, I believe. Have you guys received such a large book? And if so, could we have a copy of it to look at with you?
That's me.
Sure, so we've adjusted the way that we've done our finance committee meetings since I've been on the board. The first year was different, and this year's even different than the last. Just bringing a bit more information. So this is the budget book that we're working on now, includes a capital asset plan, and we even had a discussion in today's finance committee meeting about what that could look like in the future.
Excellent, thank you. I have a few questions for, I'm sure I have some feedback, guys. I have a few questions for the new board members, and I think that this would help me have some understanding as to why they might be some frustration. So for the three new board members, the questions that I have, the next five or six are for you. And it's not to poke, it's to find out what you have been told or not been told, so I know kind of where to channel, channel my questions moving forward. Has Superintendent Savant spoken with any of you about the 900-student capacity versus the 1,100-student capacity for the Ailer Middle School funding? Has Superintendent Savant spoken with any of the three of you about why it ended up being a 900-student school versus a 1,100-student school?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I got to be recognized and speak. I have not heard anything about that. I do have a scheduled breakfast with Dr. Spie tomorrow, and I'm sure that's going to be one of the topics discussed.
A couple of our others could be shut off, cut that feedback, Liz Bonn. Thank you.
Sure, and asked a few questions, and one of those questions, our team was that, and some of yours was directed at new school board members, so I know this will attend our finance committee meeting today and receive the response around that.
Would you be so kind as to share that with us, school, at a future date when you complete it, right? Next question I have is also for the three new school board members. Has Superintendent Savant spoken with any of you regarding the school board's policy where they changed the capacity of the schools and reduced the capacity of many, if not most of the schools by approximately 10%? Has that policy been discussed? Has the rationale or reasoning been discussed? Has there been any discussion regarding capacity and total capacities, how those can be resolved?
No.
There's none, thank you. Another question.
Mr. Chairman, and my apologies, Supervisor Graber, but could we keep the discussion to FY 2023 budget at this and come back to those items? Is that okay? Because I did have some, I know we were starting the budget conversation and.
In all due respect, Mr. Koppstuck, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to get a feel for what our new school board members have knowledge of before I delve into things. I don't want to dive into things real deep and not have the knowledge of their understanding. I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, and that's just where I'm trying to get a feel for where we are. Is that fair?
Sure, I think, I understand that trying to get a base knowledge, I think we collectively are working as a board, so to answer your question around, you know, capacity, let's get another conversation, we had, we had a basic plan, some questions that I had asked. And so every three years, there's a capacity study that's done, and I know, you know, we've talked about that on the board. So that's something that I think, in conjunction with the supervisor's mentions, and an idea of work session around what that looks like, is I can understand and maybe some frustration around that, and a kind of misunderstanding of how that works.
I have a couple more questions. This one pertains to CIP, where we just, where we just removed the Ailer expansion off of the CIP. In 2018, 2019, when the school board presented a request for a new Ailer school, there were comments made by the school administration, there were comments made by school board members that the current Ailer could not be remodeled due to various things, including asbestos, traffic and noise from I-81, the cost, traffic, pollution, being smog and exhaust, and that there was no way to make the school functional, functionally safe the way that they desired to have it. Thus, I was very surprised to see it on the current CIP. My question would be to the board is what has changed from 2018 to 2019 to present that the school can now be renovated to allow for those students when before, I don't know that the traffic has been reduced, I don't know that the exhaust is going down any. What has changed from 2018, 2019, from the environmental factors that would make it now an acceptable place to have our students?
Mr. Koppstuck. Supervisor Graber, there was a lot of discussion around that, and I think that is a good item for us to discuss as well, in terms of how to handle some overcrowding and things like that. That item appearing there was at the direction of buildings and grounds, just exploring all avenues and all options for that building. Is it feasible, is it not? And so I think there's more conversation needed around that, with the boards together to decide our next course of action in terms of how we address some of the overcrowding. But to answer your question directly, you are correct in that it was looked at, and it was determined when building the new Ailer, that it was feasible to renovate the old Ailer into a suitable space for that. Times have changed, a few years have gone by, so we were just doing our diligence as a board to look at that as one of the possible solutions to one of the overcrowding options. We weren't tied to it, we weren't ready to, we weren't asking for funding, we were just putting it on there as an option.
Well, my question is, is it's on there, you can spend money towards it. So like the fourth high school, you spent money towards engineering, towards planning, towards, I mean, over $5 million. So it does open the door to spending money on it. So my question is, is, goes back to what has changed? And my concern is, is that we're going to spend money on planning renovations, planning these different things, but my, my larger question is, is has there been a study on environmental? And is it now, can we out there a new system in and make it, you know, feasible, functional? What conversations have changed, have been had, to now make it a possible?
Having it on there allowed us to have that conversation regarding doing an updated feasibility study to see if it was a viable option. We have since determined that it's not. We've been able to garner enough data from the previous feasibility study without having to spend taxpayer dollars to do a new one. So look at what a facility like that, like the idea that was proposed would require, and in just the structure of the building, I believe 85% of the walls in the building are load-bearing walls. There were a lot of things that we looked at to make that determination, but having it on there allowed, it allowed us to start going down that path. We did not end up needing to do another feasibility study, but it allowed us to at least explore it as an option before totally writing it off and sending it back.
Appreciate your clarification, yes, sir. Just a couple more questions. This board has allocated money for different things. One of those was pre-K programs about five years ago. And part of the pre-K programs were five, it was supposed to be five classes, that were funded by federal dollars, federal funds. I have been told that that has expanded greatly, however, when I've asked a few times, I've never gotten a reply back as far as the total number of pre-K programs. So I'd really like to know how much money we're spending on pre-K of local dollars, how many total classes there are, and how does that affect our capacity of our schools? Because if it's, if we've expanded it every school, we have down 12 classes, it's now 12 classrooms that are for pre-K instead of the original five. And I don't know what that number is, so I'm not accusing it of 12. But I'd like to know the number and how much of local funds are being spent on that, so that we can have good conversations regarding capacity levels. And I think that's a conversation that we should have, as the board, because it was agreed upon originally to be the five classes. Also, I'd like to just share, and I'd like to see if anyone here is okay with this, in 2020, March of 2020, when Superintendent Savant was making his budget presentation to this board, I asked for that big book of, that was identified, of how the money was being spent. My response was, I will provide that to you if there are four supervisors who desire such. I personally do not feel that is an appropriate response. It shouldn't matter if it's one supervisor, one school board member, or all of the school board members, or all of the board supervisors. Transparency and the ability to talk over facts, I believe is important. And I hope that moving forward, we are able to, if any of your board members come to be a vice person, we're able to have that conversation and share information, as we're sharing. My last question, and I'll jump, I'll jump back. U.S. News World Report put out a survey and study of schools in Virginia in 2018 and 2019, you can go look it up. It looked at things such as math, science, college readiness, STEM programs, and many other things that I feel are very important. Frederick County did not have one school in the top 50% of that show based upon test results.
Brandon, he keeps using his phone during this meeting. That is just not right.
I'll continue, I'm sorry. So the report showed that we didn't have one school that was in the top 50%. Fairfax County, which we were very close to as far as the number percent that Vice Chairman McCarthy alluded to, 144%, over there, normally between 136, I believe it was last year, and 145, we're usually neck and neck or comparable for funding based upon students and the state funding formula, very comparable. funding formula, very comparable. They had over 10 of their schools in the top 25 schools in Virginia in those categories. So I'm concerned where our dollars are going, if they're going towards our teachers and educators, or if they're going towards administrative staff. And as I've looked at administrative staff, just rough figures, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the full breakdown of all the administrative staff and what they do, but it would appear that our administrative, we are administrated heavy, maybe as much as 15% heavier than like program subs as Roanoke County and other municipalities. Have we looked at that, and have you guys looked at that? Have we done anything to try to see if we can improve our teacher-student ratios to maybe improve our education that our children are getting? What kind of discussions have been had at your level at a lot of the school board meetings? I watch the school board meetings, I haven't had, I haven't been privileged to hear those conversations, but I think it is in the best interest of our students. That way they are math, science, STEM, college-ready, and that was concerning to me, but it's not post-COVID, it's pre-COVID. I understand in COVID, there was a lot of challenges that would make it difficult to reach some of the goals that we might have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I've been very patient.
Pardon?
You've been very... I'd like to use one of the terms that's been used on TV these last couple of years, circle back. Bring back the bad numbers and the good ones. Anyway, Supervisor McCarthy's talking about the fourth high school. And so, I don't know whether it's appropriate, it's up to you, Chairman. I'd like to maybe ask all board members individually, how they personally feel about that. That would help me out tremendously. If that's okay with you for me to ask that question, if they're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think it's comfortable to have that conversation. I think, understanding that, to Superintendent McCarthy's point, having a work session around it, you know, our boards probably aren't answering, you know, generalities around that. Just want to go down.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor Wells, I appreciate the question. And that was actually one of my notes for this evening, so I was appreciative for Supervisor McCarthy bringing that up, that we are at different levels experiencing overcrowding, and there's going to need to be some method of addressing that. And so, you know, I think the fourth high school is a viable option. Could there be other options? Maybe. And that's why, you know, I wanted to have this as an open dialogue with, between both boards, to see if your board, if you find us an appropriate option. So what ideas do you have? Just to show you our enrollment projections, and talk about where we're headed, and come up with whatever ideas are there. And then let's explore each of those and figure out which one is the best, and maybe we'll lay a judgment being the fourth high school, and maybe we'll lay down something else. But I do know that we are in a position where our high schools are overcrowded and something needs to be done.
I would absolutely agree with Mr. Kupstak. All of our high schools are overcrowded. We have to find a solution. The sooner the better, because that will save the most taxpayer dollars, and I think that everybody wins, including our students, which deserve it so much.
Thank you.
I think the, for me, it's the quality of the education. State numbers are what they are, and sometimes they are, the state as a whole, there's 132 school districts in the state of Virginia, and you have the Fairfax's, and then you have Henry County. And so, that's what state numbers try to address and try to reflect. But a visit to one of our schools, a high school, I spend, I spend more time in the high schools than I do, I guess, the elementary or middle. But a visit will tell you everything. You get into the hallway during the change of classes in a high school, and you better have your head on a school, because things are happening in those hallways. And so, the lunch period, the four and five period lunch period, there's people going to lunch at quarter till 11, and there's people going to lunch at 20 until 2:00. That's overcrowding. And so, for me, it's about the quality of the education, and we can do better. Frederick County can do better, and we should do better. That's where it is for me.
Yeah, I'll follow Mr. Lake's sentiments. Just take a tour of any of the high schools. I mean, we're in dire need of a fourth high school. And this county's growing. I was born and raised here, like many of you know. It's quite brutal to size since I was a kid, and it's not stopping. And, you know, we're ranked as the fastest-growing area in the entire state of Virginia. And we've been duct-taping stuff for years, and it's time for a fourth high school. We're at overcapacity at all three high schools. And per two of Mr. Lake's statements, it's about the quality of education. And our children, our 14,000 children in this county deserve the best education possible. And that's what we're here to do. And our kids are the future of this county. There are kids that are in our schools that will be sitting around this table and down the road. And we are setting the tone for the future of this county. And, you know, it's well overrated. Thank you.
Okay, I wish I had more insight, I would love to say, but I haven't been sitting in this position very long, and there's been a lot of paperwork thrown at me, and I've tried to read most of it. I understand the growth and the overcrowding. I can remember when I was going to Jameswood, it was overcrowded then. And I can see where a fourth school would be necessary, but at this point in time, I think we have to consider a lot of different positions, because we need to be a little more frugal. Our economy is not fantastic right now, so we need to really search this out and find the best ways to make it happen, even if that means putting some extensions, permitting extensions on some of the high schools, instead of just a trickle. I think there may be some other solutions besides just a new high school, and we need to look into it, and not just jump into this enormous amount of money.
All right. So this is a big question that I've been asked a lot by a lot of the constituents out there. I hear the teachers asking me stuff, and then I've been in a few of our schools, and they are overcrowded. You know, is a fourth high school the answer? Is it, can we add on to our schools? But there's a lot that comes on with a fourth high school, and we're already bleeding teachers, you know. You know, they're going to other counties, and with that next brick and mortar school, you have to staff it. So there is a big financial impact to the community as well, but I don't think we should sacrifice the students on the altar of frugality. What I do think is there does need to be a solution, whether we add on to these schools or maybe we do start looking at other options, such as a charter school. Maybe a little competition isn't a bad thing. I know that that kind of nails on the chalkboard for some of the people out here, but it is what it is. You know, I think that does also solve the problem of overcrowding. You guys aren't stopping letting people move in here at all. I mean, there's, over in the Redbud District and Gainesboro District, there's a lot of construction going on. So I, I mean, until you guys halt that kind of construction, you guys are getting that tax money coming in. Come on, you up? Do something.
Just a point of clarification, I think Mr. Dunn, Mr. McCarthy, and the rest of them understand the same thing. We would love to control growth, but the rewards previous to us that set those parameters. And what is happening right now is that builders have come back. They come back whenever there's a great economy, and they go away when there's not. And probably a year or two, it's my old man's prediction, they'll be going away again. Yeah, they'll be back when the times are right. But right now, every development that's going up, and you just said, why don't I stop it? Because I can't. And neither can Mr. Dunn, neither can Mr. Greber, Mr. McCarthy, Mrs. Siller. We cannot. And the reason we cannot is it's pre-done, it's a deal done, ready to go. We can't even get the poppers from them. So I'm just laying it out. So when people tell me, Mr. Wells, you need to stop growth, you need to know what I'm up against. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, I understand that. Apparently you didn't understand it, because you just told me. Did you not stop it? I can be on the table, I can start being on the table.
Mr. Wells, I'll answer your question.
Less than 10 minutes.
I'll answer your question too. I think that it's obvious, it's sort of to your point, it's true, it's coming, and I don't think anyone here at this table had anything to do with that. For me, it's about the planning of where we're headed. You know, you look at the fourth high school, we're all talking about that, but I also see those same numbers, and I'm envisioning, you know, once the conversation of the fourth high school happens, then there's gonna be a conversation of elementary school, and then a middle school, and wherever that goes. So for me, it's, how can we, what are the options on the table, to Mr. Kupstak's point, having that conversation? I know Mr. Dunn shared before that at one point, we're supervisors allocated dollars to be able to expand a high school, and that's something that we could talk about and see what impact that has on students, on the vision. Is that in the best interest? Is that something that we can do in the next five years, and then potentially 10 years to get that high school? So I don't know that I've heard anybody say, on our board at least, say that they're against anything, but I know that we're really for that conversation, and it sounds like you all are as well.
Mr. Hester.
Mr. Dunn, you made a point on something that I totally respect, and, Mr. Wells, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Wells.
You're making me feel a little...
Mr. Wells, you made a point that I wanna sort of just piggyback on, right? We understand that there's things that were set in motion years ago that you can't, you know, control now. We're in the same boat, guys. We've got schools in the system that have, you know, they were built long before we were on this board, long before we were even on that, right? And we've been duct-taping those schools for so long that our children's education is being affected, okay? And just, just like you guys, where your hands are tied with certain things, our hands are tied with certain things, okay? I mean, Ailer, the flashing was done wrong around all those windows. We had waterfalls on the inside of the school. That, that was long before any of us, and we had, we had some serious, serious issues. And so, just like you guys are having, you know, have no control over things, there's some things that we don't have control over, but we need to meet at the table. The duct tape rolls run out, and we need to set in place, because even if we were to look at a fourth high school right now, right? If it was approved today, we're three, four years out. I mean, it's not something that we approve a high school and it's immediately built. So we've gotta think forward. So not only are we thinking about things now, but we're thinking things down the road. But I appreciate what you said, because we're dealing with the same things.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks. So just a couple of comments. Just a comment to Mr. Hester, if you remember, I did call you, and actually, the reason I called you is because Mr. Stagmeyer said nobody had, so just, just let me just break that off. Bob, to answer your question on the fourth high school, I'll just go through my thought process of why I am where I am. In 2018, the spring, in April, the school administration, Mr. Orndorff and Kupstak said that they expected high school growth to be 204 students in the next 10 years. And it was how to solve that problem. And at the same time, there was discussion that Sherrando would be expanded, and you can look at the cost, cost barrier, that Sherrando would be expanded for 250 students, James Flumby would be expanded for 250 students, and then we did a proposal for Millbrook to have 400 students. So collectively, that would have met the need going forward for the next 10 years. In August of that year, the school board had a balanced discussion in Sherrando, I was there, and the number then went to 500 in five years, so I was curious on why that number had gone. But Bob, to answer your question on where would I be? I don't know, because here's the questions I like to have as answers before. First question is, what's the expected growth of high school students over the next 10 years? And how's that calculated? The second question is, currently, I certainly understand that in high schools, you have about 24 students is an ideal number. When I went to school, with some other people here, and you went to school, the number was probably between 25 and 30. And that, you may, I'll just make a comment. I believe that you're, if you're wrong. So when I was going to school, the numbers were 25 to 30, maybe yours was less, but if you go from 24 to 26, that's a 10% expansion. And if you go and spend money for an expansion and renovation, the question is, if you take out the renovations and just do the maintenance, what does that save you? Because those additional dollars are going to expand the capacity. So that's, you know, if you go through that, then you have a cost between that and the new high school. But what's the expected high school growth in the course of the next 10 years? If you did build a high school, you build a high school with a core for a capacity of, let's say, 1,500 arbitrary number. We can add things if you need to or not to, you know, go for future growth. So, thought process, I don't have answers to that. I'd like to hear, you know, answers. I'm not expecting you to have instant answers, but the thought process, what's the expected growth, what are the numbers behind it? How are they calculated? What happens if you do an expansion, renovation, and the other three? What's the cost for that? And then you do a budget analysis and see where you are.
Just a couple of questions to verify, and then I have, if there's something Mr. Hester said that I completely agree with, and I wanna really take to the next level, because I think it's important for us moving forward. Mr. Chairman, when you had mentioned your budget or your finance committee meeting, and you said you're talking about the budget book moving forward, is there discussion of having more information included in that budget book, and potentially sharing that with our board as well? Yes, so to Mr. Hester's point, and I'll let him share his finance chair as well, but I also want to share, I think it's our intention, and hopefully you saw, you know, in terms of how boards have operated in the past, we can't control that, but what we can control is how our board is operating. So, moving forward, you'll see videos that are gonna be posted online, we've had conversations with our team internally to post some of those documents and board docs as well, and provide some more information there. Specifically around the budget book, I think that's the intent, and we'll, the board will be able to change the way that it's presented, in a way that is maybe more easily consumable to people who aren't attending those finance committee meetings. And Mr. Hester, I do...
Yeah, Mr. McCarthy, I know we've given you guys information, you guys get quarterly financial statements for our expenses and things. If you go to the Frederick County webpage right now, there is, on the homepage, there's a click Budget Information button, and that has every single page that the finance committee was given and used through our budget process. Each meeting, meeting notes, every single question during those meetings, the answers to those is all on the website, and it's all there.
And I believe the Superintendent McCarthy's aware of that, just based upon, I know I directly shared that link with him earlier, I think his question was more to, and we had this conversation again earlier in finance, is how that's presented, is it year-over-year, you know, not just the proposal, kind of the backstory. A lot of times, that information is presented after our board passes that budget, but sharing that from the former conversations we had, and being able to make sure that we're providing as much info. Just to give you clarity, because I know, you know, different board members will say, well, I wanna see a detailed budget, I wanna see a lineup of budgets, and so how do we define what these things are, you know, what are we actually asking for? The point of my presentation last night is to show that there are school districts that are sharing a lot of information in a format that someone who works on budgets or consumes financial information would look at versus what we prepare for the public. Because the general public isn't necessarily either equipped or have the time or the desire to pour through the financials in the same way that our boards may, or CPA, or a Chinese person would, which, you know, you get an award every year for creating a budget that's easy to digest. I'm looking for something that's more made for the financial mind to look through and compare. And if you take a look at some of those counties that I mentioned, you can actually see, one of the frustrations I have is we do get, you know, your proposed spending for this year, but it's not, and your expenditures, but they're all different pieces of information that come in different packets. It's not one nice, neat, clean spreadsheet, like some of these other counties have, and show year after year what the new, you know, juxtaposed with percentage differences and things like that, which make it really easy to quickly hone in on, here's where the changes are.
are. So if there's a way for us to sort of work on coming up with information like that that's easy to find in one place in one document like those other organizations do, and I don't mean to be critical because I know the information is there, it's just not, it's not easily consumable in the format that I'm talking about, the financial mind, where I want to see, you know, I want to see 10, 15, 20 pages, nothing but spreadsheets versus the explanations of, you know, what a budget is.
Let me clarify one thing for you too, and we talked about this at the finance meeting today, is that, you know, and we can provide you the answers compared, because I know those stacks were rather thick last night, right? Those are billion dollar school systems. Not all of them. I know not all of them, two of them were 700 million, you know. The thing is, is that we've got two, we do have finance department, right? But when it comes to the budget itself, we have two dedicated people that work on this, okay? Mrs. Camery and Ms. Anderson, and they do a phenomenal job, but they also have other, other job priorities. And so it does make it hard. What you're looking at is our final budget, you know, we were talking about that today, right? You know, that information, all of it comes out in our final budget and we're working through that. Is there a way that we can present some of that final budget, the, the way it looks?
Yes, that's exactly.
Early, okay, and we're talking, and we do realize that, but we also have to realize, okay, going back to my other point, our administration, you know, they're, they do multiple things, you know, and so there's a lot of times where they get pulled one direction because they're doing, you know, working certain things. And so the budget is not the only thing they work on the entire year.
I guess then my request would be that we consider investing in allowing us to have very clear sites, because it's such an important part of creating, you know, the trust and the willingness to work and giving confidence to the constituents, just like putting the videos up on YouTube, I commend you for that. It took a long time to get there and a lot of people said it couldn't be done for this legal reason without the legal reason, but it's so important that people in the vault can actually see and hear what's going on. And I commend you because I think that was a huge investment that you all made in doing something that's really important. So those are the types of things I like to see us work towards on a different subject.
And just so you know, we did have a conversation today and we are, we will work towards that. You know, we've, over the past two years, we've sort of revamped the whole budget process, even though at a committee level, okay? And it's working great. So there's things that we can work on and, you know, we did have that conversation today and it's on, you know, something we're going to work towards for next year.
That's great, I appreciate that.
Mr. McCarthy, not to cut you off, but I do think it would be helpful as part of that conversation to have a sub with us and if it needs to be public too, to actually talk about exactly what we'd like to see in that. That way we can give direction to our team, you know. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we all want to have the information out there and we hate to send them the direction that's not useful for anyone. So I think maybe a follow-up meeting, not only at the high school, but also a sub committee meeting around what you included in the budget.
So one more clarification, Mr. Comstock, you had mentioned, Mr. McGarvey of Ailer, that that's been considered and did you say it's been taken off the table at this point? Or I didn't always make clear on what you were saying, has it been taken off the table completely at this point?
It has been taken off the table and it's been determined that we're not going to receive a feasibility study at this point.
So will this will be surplus then back to Frederick County or is that discussion not happening?
That discussion is, is, and what needs to happen, I think, between boards.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Hester made a comment earlier about we need to have the best school possible for the kids. And one thing I try to always remind myself is, you're all's job and superintendent's job, especially the superintendent's job, is to come to you and say, if you want the very best, here's what you have to do. And then you're the first level and you say, okay, well, if we can't achieve the very best, what's almost the very best? Because we do have finite resources, we can't always have the very best, but we should be striving for that. So I expect that Dr. Sabine is going to come to you every year and say, if you want the very best, then you want this, this is the very best you can get. And then your question is, well, if we can't get that, what's the next best thing that we can do for our kids that are still getting great education and have a discussion around that? And it's our job to ask, to say to you all, we expect you to come to us and say, this is what we think we need for Frederick County. And then we have the hard job of saying, can we fund that? And that's the hard, uncomfortable discussion that we have to have every time. So I hope everyone on our side always starts from that perspective of, we should anticipate that you're going to come to us saying, we want this, whether that's, we absolutely have to have this. That's not really, that's not what you're, you're asking us. You want something better than just what has to be. And I understand that. I just hope all of us realize that's the way it's supposed to work. This is, this is supposed to be an abrasive dichotomy between these two boards, otherwise it wouldn't be a point of having these two boards, having to approve a budget with the other. So I do appreciate that your job is to always find the very best for the students and I appreciate that's what you're all's job is, to come to us. And I hope too, you all can appreciate, we have the hard job than of saying, how do we weigh all these different competing interests and come up with the best that we can for you guys? And I think tonight's a great example of how we start that conversation of determining, you know, what's, what's the most important thing. So I appreciate that you brought it up. I think it is something that has lost some time in the weeds, is that you all, your job is to come to us and say, this is the best that we can do for the kids of Frederick County.
Can I follow up a second? Mr. McCarthy, I, I totally get what you're saying, right? But I do have to commit to Dr. Sabine with our budget process and the budget that he's given to us. If he wanted the best of the best, he's already shown that our budget would be $9 million more than what a Colonel he is right now. If you want to give us $9 million over what we're currently asking, that would be best of the best. This is a needs-based budget. We need every single dollar that's coming in front of us. We've known the, you know, what's going on locally and we would love to ask for $9 million more. But Dr. Sabine, his great leadership, the executive staff, they spent months, you know, prioritizing their needs and they already dwindled it down and then they came to us and showed us the other $9 million. And so while I see where you're coming from, and yes, we do need to have discussions about it, and no disrespect, right? But we are the board that leads the, the school system, right? You guys are the funding body. Now, we do know that there needs to be discussion, but from a perspective where you guys are trying to, and asking questions is not a big thing, right? We can have those discussions. I totally get it, but where the perception where you guys are just digging in and, and like nitty gritty on some of this stuff, that's our job. We've already come to you, it's already been vetted by the finance committee, it's been, every single board member up here has every single bit of information from the finance committee, okay? And, and so that's what I'll say about that. I am very proud of our finance department, of Dr. Sabine, the process of the budget and what has been presented as a needs-based budget. If it wasn't, if it was the best of the best, we would have come to you with a higher number.
And I hope that's the case. I guess my question would be, then how do we explain how, why we're such an outlier as far as the amount of money that we're spending compared to the average in Virginia? If we can get through that and there's good reason for it, fine, but we have to understand why are we such an outlier when it comes to spending versus the rest of the state? And to, I hope that is the case, that you as the finance chairman are doing these things, but I have some trepidation because the former finance chairman said on the camera, we don't do the weed stuff, we don't read the numbers, that's their job. So I do hope that you're doing those things now, because I do think that it's your all's job and I hope that is something that you've changed since you've taken over the committee. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I do want to second what Mr. Hester said and back up a little bit as well during our fall retreat. We as a school board have set the priorities of where we want to see Dr. Sabine's focus on, on the budget. And then he works towards that with staff, figuring out what are the needs. And so the budget that we have presented is truly, in my opinion, I've gone through it, it is a needs-based budget. There are plenty of other things, as Mr. Hester referenced, $9, $10 million of additional things that are kind of wish list, boon shot items really. But we just before, before you are absolutely needs on what we feel we need to, to continue. I did want to bring up, I know that there's been some discussion, so if we can dive a little bit into some of that, what you referenced about those percentages. And I think that there was a constituent here who brought some reports and there's a, UU puts out this data and they call it required local effort and then actual local effort, and they calculate these numbers based on a lot of different things. So I don't know how much all of you know about it, but basically the state has a formula for calculating how much a locality can afford and we call it the local composite index. And so then they, they calculate how basically a locality's ability to pick up their share of the tab, if you will, for the lowest level SOQ positions. And just for clarity sake, every single school division in the state funds above that level. There was some information and the data that's on there is a few years old, it's 2018, but the percentage, I believe, was under 25.79% above what the state says our locality, Frederick County, should be able to, to contribute and afford. And in looking at that and then looking at some others, I believe there, we are 21st, if I calculated correctly, there were 21 other school divisions that, or 20 other school divisions that, that fund at a higher rate than we do. So I think there was a number that said five or six or seven or something like that, but I believe it's closer to 21, just in my looking at that report. But what I've been going through, and I pulled some data for the, just for the sake of comparison, I tried to look at other school divisions in Virginia that are similar in size to us, not just our neighbors, but one of their school divisions are the same size as us, between 13,000 and 14,000 students. And we got Frederick County, Alamooral, Portsmouth, Roanoke City, Roanoke County and Suffolk. And all of those are fairly close in size to what we are. And then looking at those, for example, Alamooral, they fund at 133.37% above, they fund at 125.79%. Roanoke City, 110.169, those are pretty close. Portsmouth's actually 296%. So those numbers, it's, it's all data, but it's all based on, I wouldn't hang the hat on all of that data, because it's all calculated based on home values and average median income and that much. And then they use this formula to calculate how much can the county and/or city actually afford to contribute just for the lowest level. We as a board have dedicated and we as a school division and hopefully a community have dedicated ourselves to delivering better than just the base level SOQ education for our community's children. And I think doing that, also, we want to pay our teachers, enough to retain our teachers. We want to have the programs in place to support kids. We want to have a phenomenal, noteworthy CTE program that other divisions call to ask us about. We want to have, we want to be a premier school division. And then the amazing things going on with Inspired 2025, and I think that that funding has allowed us to do that. And so one other piece of data that I looked at was just in terms of the number of people we employ as well. And so I would maybe ask the board to consider that we, in this new proposed budget, we would be employing the equivalent of 2040, 47.7 FTEs, full-time equivalent. And when you compare us to those other localities that are similar in size, it's a little bit more than most states, less than Alamooral. I think there's a lot more money in Alamooral than there is here. But, but when you calculate, if you were, and I know this is, like I said, I'm not hanging around on my data, I'm a statistician, but when you calculate the total proposed budget and the number of people we employ, our cost to employ those people is actually less per person than any of those other divisions. So I hate to think that people think, whether that be constituents or citizens or anyone for that matter, supervisors or members of this board, think that we're misusing money because I, I do, I spent a lot of time looking at this and I really don't believe that we are and believe that we're spending money. Sure, there's probably things that we can do better, there's probably areas for reflection and adjustment, but are we on the right path? Absolutely, I think so. We're doing some amazing things that are noteworthy throughout the state, we're delivering a good education and, and, you know, I don't think you can make that determination of how good the education we're delivering is based on a Forbes report or our test score. I think it's more what you actually see happening in our classrooms and the connections to real world and the opportunities they're setting our children up with. And so I, I firmly stand behind this budget and I would ask that you support it for us.
I appreciate that. One final comment before I finish up. I believe that 21 figure was what we're paying, where we fall as far as where we pay salaries to the teachers or at least there's a commensurate, commensurate number. So I'd like that we could have a follow-up conversation so we can sort of hash all this out and get a better idea, because I want to make sure that if we're funding at a higher rate than most other school divisions, the average, that we're also making sure that our teachers are above the average in their salaries, because it's, they're honestly, I like the bricks and mortar, but as long as we have great teachers, we're going to have greatly educated students. I went to the Old Kingsboro School where the windows wouldn't open, the, there was no air conditioning, they would pull the map down the wall and it was the 48 states of the United States, because it hadn't been changed at the 1950s. And we've got a great education because our teachers were dedicated, wonderful, wonderful teachers, and I believe we have that in Frederick County. And I just want to make sure that we don't lose focus of what's the most important thing. I know space is important, but we also have to balance it out with, you know, what's the most important thing? And I know you guys struggle with that every day when you're, you're doing your job. So I think if we can have a follow-up meeting at some point, sort of hash through all of these numbers and make sure that all of us, your side, our side, all understand how this works and we get comfortable with that, that would make things a lot easier moving forward, because the numbers that I was seeing for 2021 are showing us in the 140s percent and the state average has actually dropped down into the 70s percent. So it's showing that we're funding way beyond, so we're an outlier now, or we haven't always been an outlier, I just want to get a handle on why that is, maybe there's a really good reason for that. I just want to find out, you know, whether there is. I appreciate your comments on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to go back, circle back to something that Mr. Hester said. I'm looking presently at the Frederick County Public Schools website and I'm looking at the minutes from your finance committee. There's a total of nine slides here and I've lost nine slides, there's six that actually have like a small spreadsheet on, the others are just pictures or just a few words typed in. But there was some clarity asked by the chairman and I appreciate him asking for clarity on what we were looking for. So I'd like to just read one of the bullet points here from your finance committee report. It says, all funds, FCPS, financial funds, it has operating and it has a lot, it has debt service and a lot, capital projects, a lot of funds, school nutrition, textbook, consolidated services, profit purpose, health insurance service, construction, the total. That doesn't give me any of the detail and I'm going to tell you why I'm concerned about this. Just last year, I was told that there was no money going for deep equity programs in Frederick County from local tax dollars.
There are none.
Only to be told by your school superintendent later that over 65% of it was funded by local tax dollars. And I, it appears on, I have it.
You like FOIA?
I do like FOIA. It's very effective to point out things that are, are being told like at this level that may not be factually correct. The next avenue that I'd like to say is, if I may continue there, is I've been told that deep equity has simply been replaced by something called BBPIS, which stands for Positive Behavior, Interventions and Support. I would like to be able to see what those documents are and where they are here in the plans. How much is being spent on? Is it being, countywide, is it included at each school? The documents that Mr. McCarthy brought, that Mr. McCarthy brought last night, I have looked at some of those online, whether that be Loudoun County, Alexandria, Alamooral or others. I can go by school on many of those budgets and I can see exactly what's being spent on each program at that school. And that is really helpful for me.
We have that also.
May I continue or would it just like to be the Brad Hester Show?
In fact, I'll just shut up, it's the Brad Hester Show. It's on, just put. So, Mr. Comstock, do make some comments on the budget, you want to talk about the budget, so, some gentle comments. In 2014, between 2014 and now, there's been a 7, 800, there's been a 7% student population growth. Between the same time, this school operating budget's increased about 37%. So you have 7% growth on, on students, 37% growth in operating. And so when you had asked, you know, what do you want to say? From my perspective, I would just say, you know, walk through the budgets on what expenditures were, what the difference is as you go through up the scale. I've been told that the administrative side of your personnel is top. I mean, I don't know whether that's
I don't know whether that's true or not. But take a look at, you know, what the administrative growth's been and see where you are. In that same budget, I know that you offered certain schools or ongoing school buses. And you said that approximately, you need 13 school buses every 15 years. So you need 13 school buses a year, 15-year life expectancy. That's $1.3 million. So if you and I were to sit down and draw a budget, my comment to you would be, well, you would be, one of the highest priorities, and then you just work down. And when you run out of money, you say, okay, is this really critical? Or is there something above that that can we adjust? Or do we have to go back and get some more, you know, some money from someplace? So is school safety and school buses are important? Then can you not find 1.3 million out of the 217 million dollar budget? Less than one half of the time. I'm not thinking on the spot, just going through a thought process. I've talked to some school bus drivers. And their comment is, sometimes I'm having to ride a second shift after the first shift. And the school out in front of Cincinnati says, you know, we need school bus drivers. I know that you gave school buses, school bus drivers a raise a year or two ago. If you're short of school bus drivers, then maybe you're going to have to go and pay a little bit more to get that. I'm not saying that's the only answer, but to do something. And if somebody above that says, you know, are the teachers a teacher? Why is the school bus driver being paid the same? It might be because we haven't need there. It's as simple as that, you know, supply and demand. So from my perspective, I'm just looking to see where you are. And I'll challenge you to go through that budget. Ask yourself the question, is everything in this budget heated? Mr. Hester said, and you said, you know, it's a need space, but each year we've gone up. It's been approximately a 5% increase each year that you've had in the last six or seven years. Yet there's some things in there that your school board, previous year, they said you come back. So for example, he did give you a couple of examples. Well, it was pre-K. In 2017, 2018, 2018, your board came to our board and said, "A $500,000 grant for a two-year program for pre-K." The comment was that if you're going to have local money involved, that we didn't come back. And in October 2017, Mr. Lopp said, "I don't believe it." Unfortunately, that's occurring. So we now have eight pre-K classes with 72 students in them. And the cost is probably $500,000, $600,000, $700,000, if you look at the numbers. My question is, what's more important? You buy six or seven buses with that or pre-K? Prior to 2017, 2018, you did have a head start program. You do have other opportunities in the private sector for parents to, you know, give their children something to play in, et cetera. So in a balancing act, is that the best use of money? And that's, you know, you can say yes or no, but that's the thought process, you know, I go through. And I'm just challenging you to say, in other things, you know, what's the thought process? A few years ago, we gave $28.5 million for a new twoschool, twoschool elementary school. At the same time then, the previous school board then reduced the elementary school capacity by over 670 or 680 students. So Jordan Springs had 500 students. We spent $28.5 million with less capacity than before. And my question is, you've done a lot with $28.5 million. So when you come and say, we have capacities, lay out and say, here's why. Just don't say that, and then ask for $28.5 million to go to school, you have less capacity than the elementary school. That's just some of the frustrations, just some of the thoughts I share with you. And that's it, Mr. Comstock. I also appreciate you working hard.
I think, Ms. White, did you have a...
I think it's necessary that we call this session to order. There's a board member on the other side that just mouthed the word shithead. Or it's another board member. We saw it, Mr. Graver and the Iron.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Really suggest that.
I think, from, yeah, I think the conversation that Mr. Dunn had, Mr. McCarthy and all had around really getting on the same page and having, not accusing either side. We recognize that many of us were not at this table when decisions were made that impacted the relationship that these boards have. But moving forward in that direction, in the spirit of working for our community and students, having these policy discussions is important. And I think it's vital. Mr. Dunn, to your point about shortages of bus drivers and school nutrition professionals just last year in the budget, one of the things that we included was insurance for school nutrition professionals because we saw a need there. And where our hope was that that would increase the applicants. So I think those are the type of things, since I've been a member of this board, I can't speak for others, but I know I have interest in, you know, and I've been accused of getting involved too much. But I think that's important for all of us, to be aware of our program and appreciate a good spirited effort to have those conversations, recognizing that ultimately there is a finite level of resource. But if we come at it from that perspective, really our students and community are first, then I think we'll be in a better shape. Mr. Hester.
Yeah, one thing I just want to, you know, you brought up a good point about the school buses and things like that. I just wanted to make a couple of comments around our school buses. If best case scenario, on a yearly basis, based off of our fleet of buses.
Okay.
Best case scenario, we'd have to buy 13 school buses every year.
Okay.
Most people don't know, and I think you do know this, but I'm just saying for the general public. Our school buses in the county, on a daily basis, okay, cumulative miles put on our school buses is equivalent to two ground trips from New York City to San Francisco and back, on a daily basis. And just like other things, we have tried, and I wish we could get 13 new school buses every single year. Because if we look at the fleet of school buses, that's what it would take. But we also have to realize that, you know, we have other priorities. School buses aren't cheap. I mean, they are, and so.
I resonate with you.
The other thing I would like to tell you is that we try our darndest to keep our, like, our bus drivers. It's a rotating thing. And one thing that we also deal with is they'll come in, take the training, get their CDL license, and they'll never start with us. And so that's something we deal with on a regular basis. But nothing bad to say about, well, I just wanted to make some clarification because our school buses, I mean, the public knows, we had that fire on the school bus last year. And that was on a school bus that we thought was perfectly fine. Luckily, nobody got hurt, but, and I don't want that to happen again. But, you know, we do, our transportation department, I have no idea how they do it because of the amount of work they put on our school buses.
Quick response. On the school buses, I don't know, after 15 years, how many miles we have it on. So I don't know, do you need a new engine? Do you need a transmission? It's really, we just see it on the site. The person said to me, you know, I keep my car going for 20 years. My wife has a car that runs for 20 years. It doesn't make, you know, thousands of miles per day. So if that's the need, then I'm just encouraging you to buy the maintenance, 1 half of 1% for the total budget, 217, 218 million dollars. So that's where I challenge you to run through priorities. If you chose definitely the right item, that's your prerogative. But, you know, that's just one example. In other words, Mr. Hester, and you and I may agree or disagree, but I would challenge you to alter. You're a banker. Person comes into, I believe you are, right? And a person comes in who learns a title. I want $100 million. And you can say, why? What are you going to use for? What's the security behind it? So I think you would be able to tag or not with a default risk, et cetera. So you go through that item, you say, yes, we'll give you 100, or we'll give you 50, or no, we can give you anything. You're the finance chair, I'm just saying the same thing. Walk through your highest priorities, your lowest priorities, and see where you are. And if you can come to us and say, here's our price, and I agree with you, I'm going to say, you won't? Yeah, I will then go and help support more money. And if you, if I disagree with you, I'm going to say, no, I disagree with you, here's why, and, you know, you have to notice the way they are. But we've never had the opportunity to do that. Just make one more comment. From my perspective, I'd like to see lots of detail. I'd like to have the public have the opportunity to see lots of detail. We're all dealing with public money, it's not private money. And so if your finance people simply put out, this is what we have, and notice multiple pages of spreadsheets there, if there's a reason you can't do it, you know, we can have that discussion. But, you know, but only if the expenditure's more than, let's say, $50,000. For example, I was told, so I don't know if it's true. I was told that the school spent $100,000, $130,000 to pay for the parking lot. The gravel parking lot is now blacktopped. If that's true, then the question is, is that the best use of money? Okay, what's a blessing again? If it's inaccurate, then that's good to know too. There's that type of stuff, where where's the money going? And I'm not trying to micromanage, but the competing dollars for that from the citizens are three. So there's three people that are looking for dollars. You're looking for dollars, that's the school board. We're looking for dollars from the county perspective. And the residents are saying, we don't want to give either of you money because we'd like to spend it ourselves to do certain things. So let's get the competing interests. And then how do you best, you know, use those competing interests? And that's the challenge.
Can I follow up for a second? Mr. Dunn, I really appreciate this open conversation, I really do. You know, it's one of these things where we do do that. We set our priorities, you know. What if we had to pay for the parking lot? That's what this board was elected to do, to help make those decisions. You guys are the funding board. We make the decisions about the school board. Now, I do understand we need to have open conversations, right? But it's not a micromanaging thing, like, it's not. And so if we can come together and have these conversations, you know, you've got to realize, you do realize, I'm not going to say that. You do realize that. But you're the funding board, we're the school board. We were all, everybody around this table was elected to our own decisions. And so I would challenge you with that, in the fact that, let us do our job, okay? Let's meet at the table, like we're doing right now, okay? Have these conversations, okay? But if we need to pay for blacktop, don't give us grief about it. It needs to be done, okay? And that, and again, I'm not coming after what you're saying, but it's like, those are what, those are the types of decisions that our administration, this school board, the finance committee, we're all making.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll be done. I've made the comments, some of you may or may not be familiar with this, but I've made the comments, we have grown the community. The only way we're going to get raised money here is a couple of ways. One is raise real estate taxes. And I'm not keen on that because it puts a tax burden on existing people here. We've also talked about the fact that if we had capital cost recovery, or if we had a cost where people didn't move in here or build here, pay the additional operating costs and capital costs. Such a situation is being done both in Florida and California, that it would be a way to take care of some of the money issues for increasing population. In the last 20 years, we've grown 50%, 30,000 people. I was in this room a few weeks ago, and Roger Thomas, who's on the planning commission, said that the ratings were being built. They were being built for about $175,000. And people were moving in from Northern Virginia, and they said, I don't want to buy a cheap house. I'm, you know, I'm coming from Fairfax. I had $1 million, why don't I want to buy a cheap house? Perception. So they raised the price by $25,000. And all of a sudden, well, hey, I can buy $200,000. And I thought, you know what? If that's in $25,000 or $30,000 going to the county to cover some of the capital costs, they would have the perception, we go and are having expensive house versus a cheap 175 house. And the county would have the money to do and address some of the capital costs. So we deal with capital costs, we're also dealing with operating costs as this population grows, or fire rescue. If you want to buy a new fire engine, it's $2.5 million. Buy a new ambulance is $300,000. If you go down to Sensory Road, which has 300 or 400 houses that are being built on or around, and would be feeding into that, that's supposed to be a four-lane road. And each person here has probably some roads in your own district that need improvement. So that's a funding source. So I'm not keen on just raising real estate taxes for new growth, having go on those that are here. And I'm trying to find a solution. If you have a better idea, I'm willing to respond. But that's the issue. So if you think that there's a way to continue to raise money, it's fairly done, let me know. Thank you. And that's not paying that, because, yeah, that's a genuine comment.
Mr. Dunn, I don't know that we want to do anything in California, so.
Okay. I'm excited about that. Mr. Dunn, I'm confident about that.
I would ask, Mr. Dunn, could we use some of the 60 million that's in savings from the county on any of the school projects?
From what I understand, and the chairman can say, I understand that there's about 40. And I understand that.
Okay, 40.
And I understand that about approximately 28, 29 of that is designed for emergencies. So you can take the stock of the treasure, but there's a certain contention that things go in heck in a handbasket, that that's designed to carry us forward. I believe, and Mr. Shibley can give you better answers, I believe that we're spending substantially over $13 million a month. So the $26,000, $27,000, something in that age where it's designed, fireworks, as emergency time. And then above that, it's designed for capital projects.
George. Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. So we've talked a lot about, and I appreciate this discussion, whether everyone took every comment and was happy about it or not. I think opening the communication is the way to go. I think that's what the public wants to see. And so we've talked a lot about what the board's positions are, budgets, but we've left a little bit, maybe the third party, the public, out in the kind of communications I know you get and that I get as well from people. So this county is growing. In fact, the population is growing faster than the student population is because people who move here are often retired disproportionately. I believe don't bring as many children into the community. Regardless of how that ratio falls, there's a lot of county needs. We haven't allocated money for roads out of county funds in something like 12 years. And the people who move here and who live here, they also want to make certain that the fire and rescue's not overburdened, that the sheriff's office can answer in a timely way. way. So there's many, many competing demands for the public dollars. Now, the public does email you, I believe it, and call you, and want the very best schools for their children. They should. They should demand the very best of all the services that we as a county provide. When we ask for more detail, I know it can be seen as micromanaging, but we're not trying to tell you which kind of bus to buy. Our decision is a different decision. We have to decide, if some extra dollars come in, let's say from the state, from somewhere else, where is the greatest need? Is it another school bus? Is it sheriff's office, deputy vehicles? Is it, you know, parks and rec? All the many things that go on in the county. So we have to understand cost benefit in greater detail than you might understand, so that we can make those trade-offs with the budget. It's something the public expects when they contact us, you know. Also, I want to say something about transparency. All this is taxpayer dollars we're talking about here. They deserve to see where every dollar is spent, from schools and from all the other parts of the county budget. And, I believe we should put as much of that online as possible. People will crowdsource and dig in, and maybe make some observations that seven there and seven here wouldn't have the capability to see. I think hearing questions from the public is great, and putting that information out there is really, really important, and that's what we're asking for, for them, not just for the job that we have to do. And, to step maybe a little away from budget, a tiny bit, public transparency, I get a lot of questions about the schools, yes, I get, you know, can we find some more dollars and fund more things in the schools, as well as in other departments, of course, that's fair enough. But then, I've also gotten a lot of questions, for example, in just the last year, since when I paid the most attention to county operations, the New Taylor School opened, and there was a lot of surprise among the public. Forget what the boards do, maybe you didn't know either, but that the capacity would be 200 students less than everyone expected, when they knew that the county was allocating that money. Nobody that I know of knew that urinals, that we're going to be urinal in a women's bathroom. Now, also in the last year, the equity spending, that was also a surprise to the county. So, I think transparency, it's just as true with us as it is for you. Transparency is what the public demands, the more we put out there, the less surprise they get, the happier they'll be. Look, we don't have to agree on things like deep equity or other programs, or particular spending, but we owe it to the public to put it out there, so that the debate can be had. And if I lose, I lose, but I want to know, the frustration you hear sometimes from this board is things that we didn't realize were going on, and money that was being spent, or policies that were being put in place. So, I think we should continue these conversations, I think we, a categorical or a line-item budget would make the public happy, not just the different boards, and not just make our jobs easier. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
So, with some of the questions that Mr. Dunn had, it does feel at times like you are micromanaging, or the board supervisor does micromanage. I understand the questions, and I, you know, we're all trying to scratch and get to the root cause of everything. I think Mr. Hester has done a pretty good job of, you know, continuous improvement on trying to show more transparency on the budget. It's not going to happen overnight, we're trying to, I know he's making a lot of effort in that direction. And I appreciate, you know, having this open discussion, answering Mr. McCarthy's questions. You know, we do need this, you know, table discussion where we can all talk, and to Mr. Wells, when it is like a family, you know, we've all got to be a community together, and we all should have that open transparency. You know, one of the biggest things that I've seen, and had, I think the department that gets put behind the most is our transportation department, you know, our bus drivers, you know, they're working hard, and to Mr. Hester's point, unfortunately, sometimes we do pay for these folks to get a CDL, and then, you know, they're like a daggone out for a pack of cigarettes, they never show back up. So, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to alleviate some of that stuff, and we're trying to get those people to stay with us, and, you know, I'm looking to maybe pump up their pay, to come back and stay with us. Same with the teachers, you know, these folks over here, you know, they really do put their hearts and souls into it, you know, they want to be here just for the money. But, you know, it would like, I would like to show them some appreciation, and I think getting that transparency, you know, out there for you guys, so that you guys can answer your own questions, and the public, they can, you know, see why we're justifying this. I know that one of the things we talked about on the building and grounds committee is not kind of just being a rubber stamp, but actually getting in there with some of the bidding, and looking at some of the drawings and plans for the schools before, you know, they come before us. So, we are making efforts to try to get a lot of stuff to be more transparent, and we want that for both sides. Yeah, and that's about it, thank you.
It's been, it's really been a good discussion, I really think so. I remember one time when I was in court trying to collect some money from a guy that donated to me. I was working very hard, I'm not a lawyer, I had a lawyer, paying him a lot of money, he couldn't do me very much good, but...
It wasn't anybody on the school board.
It wasn't anybody on the school board. But, I kept saying things, and he said, "In your opinion," Mr. Wells, "in your opinion." And I walked out of Woodstock Courthouse, and I thought, man, in my opinion, he was right, I really thought that was the way we should be, but in my opinion, and his opinion weren't the same. So I'm going to preface this by saying, in my humble opinion, the school board members, I think six to seven in the vote, or however it came down, I don't know how the numbers there, I don't know who voted where, you brought this 22-school board budget to the board's administration. And you presented it as a good and professional budget that represents the money you feel is necessary to properly fund Frederick County schools for the 2022 school year. And said, here we are, we're giving you this budget, we've worked hard on it, and we'd like to, we'd like to get this, but we don't know what we're going to get, but we'll deal with this as we get back what we can, but you brought it in good faith, and I think you've done a good job of doing that. I know that the other night, the board meeting, Mr. McCarthy was holding up all the different sizes of school board budgets, and I know he doesn't, like I don't, thickness doesn't give you a quality of a budget, it gives you an idea of maybe how much detail everybody goes into, but sometimes detail isn't necessary. So, I'll end by saying this, I think it's in the presentation. If you come to my house to have a steak, I'm going to cook a steak, lay it on the plate, have a baked potato, it might be a green-colored plate, it might be a pink-colored plate, it's good, and you're going to say, man, that's really good steak. But if you go to a fancy restaurant, they present it differently, and you go, wow, that was really good, I just paid $80 for that. And squirted some stuff across his tongue, wrote my name on the end of the plate, and, you know, you had a wonderful night with your wife, your girlfriend, your significant elder, whatever. So, presentation's important, and I think we're getting there. I think many of the board members have said, you're doing the things, we'd like to see a different presentation. And, you're saying, okay, I'm going to cook that steak for you, but now I'm going to, what I've been doing is okay, and it's a great steak, but I'm just going to add to it and make it a little bit more powerful, for you to feel good about it. And, I think we're working there. I think Chairman Munk has done a good job of getting things together and moving in the right direction, and I just feel we'll accomplish a whole lot more as we move ahead. That's where I'm, I'm really, really pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Wells, you made me hungry, I haven't eaten yet. My kids have, I know they're feeding me my health with, so I'd like to see if we can wrap it up, and maybe suggest that we schedule at least two meetings for the coming, you know, six to nine months, with specific topics, especially related to things like the high school, maybe other CIP items. And I'd like it if we can continue to have conversations in between those meetings, so we can gather more information, so we're all well-educated and well-prepared for those meetings, if that's okay, that would be my recommendation to the boards, if we could work together towards that. And I appreciate all of this interaction, I know it's not easy, and it takes a lot of time out of our evenings to do this, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, and I don't want to speak far, but I know we've had many conversations around further developing the relationship, and maybe having a less formal setting, we know we've got to have folks watching us, but having a less formal setting, rolling up our sleeves and getting to work, and having some of those meaningful conversations, I think is beneficial to us, I don't see our board in any way objecting, and in fact, you've laid out some high school capacity issues, budgets, just a few, so I think there's a lot that we can discuss.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead. I'd like to share the same sentiment with Mr. McCarthy, I really appreciate us coming together and having this discussion. I'm going to put this out there, please call us, please, I have, like, every single one of you, you've got my cell phone number, please just reach out if you've got questions, okay? As I said at the beginning, I think our board can work on things, I think you guys could work on some things, on presentation, on just saying things at our meetings, just reach out, okay? If you don't have my cell phone, it's 5403369629, it's our county's, yeah. Guys, reach out, I'll have a coffee, have a beer with you. Let's sit down, just, instead of assuming things, or getting information and then just making assumptions, let's have these conversations. I appreciate us all being here, I do agree with you, let's set up two meetings over the next six, nine months to have this meeting again, but in between there, we're open. I mean, the school, I have never seen a school system more open about the information that's out there. It's there, and so, just reach out. Thank you, everybody.
So, Mr. Hester, thank you, so I will reach out, probably mainly through mine, but I appreciate being able to reach out to anyone. I want to ask the two chairmen, though, I have a little bit of concern, maybe the public does, too, that, so if we communicate one-on-one, you know, that's great, although, that doesn't, you may not be aware of some of the communications, and there might be some confusion and different opinions, you'll get different answers on certain questions from different ones that is here, and the same thing would occur with me asking you questions. I think the public might worry that, well, is anything really going to happen between these boards, except for one or two scheduled meetings over the next six to nine months? So I would like to suggest a different avenue also, to complement that, where I could submit some questions to my chairman to pass to yours. Maybe we all have questions, or maybe only some of us do, and that, that would be a way to formalize a little bit more, and open another lane of communication for, maybe you'd call them semi-formal, you know, they're not formal published budgets or anything, but question and answers on paper or on email, so we can get more clarity that way, from board to board.
Blaine, if you could give me just a moment, I have often, and continuously, and anyone sitting in the room knows, what is ideal is that everyone gets the same information from the same source at the same time. If we can stay on the same page, much easier that way, and it certainly works out, but, and I ask that those go through at the end for transmission between the two boards.
Yeah, that is a little of my concern, with just, I don't want it to be just person-to-person dialogue.
I agree, I agree. Thank you, Blaine, go ahead.
So, you know, I asked those, you may have asked those, too. I'll probably forward to you, and so you can all see some of my concerns, etc., you can read through and ask some questions. Mr. Hester, in the last two weeks, give take, I've obviously seen more information from the school budget than I've seen in the last five and a half years, so I thank you for that. It's public money, and so, unless there's a reason we can't, I'd say, Mrs. Camery, just open up your books and let the public see where money is being expended. It was $2.83 to buy a pop school, you know, it's 7:00 in the night, because somebody's in, so, so maybe put a small little, my interest in detail is probably deeper than some of yours, but as a taxpayer, I think I have that right, this is public money. And so for that reason, if there's a reason you can't, and for the county money, same situation, if somebody says, I want to see the Freddie County's budget, I'd be glad to say, fine, here it is, do I even know everything about it? Heck no. If somebody finds something that makes sense to me, hey, do you need to spend this money? I'm going to say, okay, no. Or, maybe it's something that's really important, and the only caveat I put there, that is if there's something that is sensitive, we're not the federal government, we're not dealing with, you know, black boxes, but if there's stuff because the police office, the sheriff's office has investigations that are, that the public does not know about, there's an investigation, I'm going to say, fine, it's a black box, X dollars are going to it, leave it there. If you have items that I'm aware of, that are basically black box, you know, I'm willing to leave it there. But I think the public has a right to know where the tax dollars are spent, on both sides, so that's just my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all these, hey, I asked Mr. Foreman two years ago to have a second meeting, so I'm glad we're having it, and I'll be up to another one, and maybe, you know, if Conformant may disagree, we may agree, but I think it's best for everybody to just lay out, here we are, here's where we agree, here's where we disagree, and here's where we don't know, and then try to solve some problems. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing. You know, just from a public perspective, okay, and I know you guys realize this, or, you know, going through our financials, but our budget, our total budget, right, 84% of that is made up of salaries. 84% goes to, you know, our teachers and administration. And so, there's only 16% of that outside of salaries that we're working with. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I would ask Mr. Dunn, does the county, you know, track the sale of ice super hops? I mean, because if they do, then I would love to see that as a constituent of Frederick County, but I, you know, and I get where you're coming from, but, you know, it's, we also have to realize that, you know, we go through our same process with our budget that you guys go through with the county budget, so, I'll put that at that, and I do understand where you're coming from, but I just wanted to put that out there in regards to our budget. Thank you. I get it. Guys, this means a lot, you know, that we could all come around here and talk as a board. You know, some of you I haven't had open discussions with, and I really appreciate this openness tonight. Some of you I talk with on a regular basis. So I hope that by us coming together, we can have these open conversations. Mr. Lomond, I understand where you're coming from, but part of it is meeting with, you know, the other side, you know, getting to know each other, so, you know, you want to get together, I'm the at-large, I'm the entire county, so I know you guys are constituent, but I'm the at-large member. And so, I mean, call me up, so I'm already giving you my cell phone. Thank you.
All right, well, we certainly thank everyone. I think this is an outstanding start. I think that we all, I don't think there's a soul in this room that doesn't want the same thing, for our community, for our children, and our community has always been a very special place, the primary reason in my mind has always been that our community, a very high percentage of them are engaged and contributing. It sets us apart from most communities. So, I hope this is just the very beginning of very productive working together, it's what I think we've all longed for. I think we can make it happen. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, please turn.
Motion to adjourn in a second. Thank you all, stand and adjourn.